She's recording for tonight.
Well, I'm just saying what I read in the Tribune.
But they were gonna try and honor her request to be in a facility.
Close to home.
Close to home.
That'd be in Terre Haute, wasn't it?
I'm thinking in Terre Haute, yeah.
Yeah, three years in a... Some lady said she used to work, did it say Burger King or a local fast food restaurant?
Oh, yeah.
Managed them, and she became a tax preparer and... Would they have to, they would have, you know, I was telling my wife about that. Would they have to prove that she actually knowingly and fraudulently did though?
They can't accident out errors of omission.
I mean, because a tax accountant can make errors. I mean, they can make legitimate errors on your tax preparation.
I know.
And they'll overlook that as long as you're paying whatever it is. You look like a... There you go. Where's your tie? Isn't this casual Monday because it's Valentine's? Oh, I didn't know. Oh, it's reaching across the table, Republican Day.
It's a red tie day.
It's red tie. In honor of St. Valentine's Day.
We got three down there.
Or...
What?
What is this, a news release?
Three red ties.
Oh, there you go.
You know what, I wasn't even thinking about that.
There you go, Harry. Harry, Henry, 52 new jobs right there. Three businesses, a press release just coming out, coming out of the corner. I saw two new jobs.
I saw that, man.
Oh, did you?
I know I have doctors up.
I was telling you. What do you mean, doctor?
I didn't mean, those jobs is probably what has already been talked about over the last couple of weeks.
Do you have an extra one?
They're coming this way.
Well, I think I took the last one.
I was under the impression...
Okay, I'll send, let me just read it. Got EDC Supply, McCormick, and South Bend Gear.
And now they're sitting there saying, you know...
Yeah.
Yeah. That was... I asked Bob Mathia about that.
About what?
When we were talking about that McCormick thing at the redevelopment commission, I was under the impression, according to Bob Mathia, that they were, they got their first abatement, which was for the million dollars or so, and they were enthused about that. They went back to corporate, and corporate said, "Let's do this other one." And so, all of a sudden, it was like a $10 million project. And now they were sort of backtracking. We were sitting there, it's like, "Well, we gotta take this to corporate."
And they'll take it. You know, other people in other places involved.
Oh, I'm sorry, here, here.
You know, and if that's the case...
And all of a sudden, I felt like we're just leverage.
Darren got one.
You know, and that's not the one I was told on the, when we were sitting there. And that's sort of annoying.
We don't need any hammer here.
So, the other thing we could do would be put a, like, put a 30-day commitment on that.
Right, I just told you.
The offer expires after 30 days.
Do we have an invoker?
Well, that was kind of my question I asked, 'cause all of a sudden, it was like, holy God. Can they go back on that? They don't do, or...
We'll do it.
Yeah, they could.
Okay.
They could, they could say, "We decided to do somewhere else and not take it."
We'll go to under, under special...
There's mechanisms to correct that.
To correct it.
A special business, Tim, Tim Rouse will be named to the, what's the paper?
Architectural Review Board. Uh... Coordination Park.
Coordination Park. Congratulations on that.
All good, Timmy.
Great honor. He honors architecture from, from Hoover Post, by the way. Um, 8410 needs to be...
Wait, wait, wait. Under special business, we'll need a motion...
Oh, motion to hear...
...to hear that under the resolution section of the, of your agenda.
So, all we need to do is motion, we don't need to read it, just go 1108.
Right.
Okay. Motion to hear under resolution portion of the meeting. 8410 out of ZNA needs to be accepted as a substitute, and that is favorable. 7510 is continued to...
Their reading has to be 228, yes. Okay. 220?
On which one?
On 8410, sub.
Okay. Um, 7510?
Continue to 28.
Continue to 28. We have 211 is favorable out of ZNA. 8610 is continue to 314. Resolution will go directly to 1108. I have the shoot. And we do not have a committee report. Did we hear, yeah, we heard that.
Yeah, it was favorable.
Yeah, favorable.
It was favorable.
Out of CED. 1109 favorable out of CED.
It got shifted.
Oh, 'cause it was shifted.
1110 favorable out of CED.
Wait a minute. You're a page ahead of yourself.
No, I'm not.
That's what I was gonna ask Kathy. Should Oliver get, give the ZNA a report, or should I, since Oliver was here?
I can start reading. I'm wrong.
I know, we're having it.
Pardon?
Cruise control.
And he did all the hard work, though.
So, then 1111 is favorable out of CED, as was 1110.
Can you use it in campaign?
Correct. Thank you, Reverend Rouse, and 1112 is also favorable out of personnel and finance.
Good.
Then we are out.
Oliver will give the committee report from ZNA.
President Dieter. Um, I just handed out everybody a letter that I doctored up here shortly. I didn't get a chance to do it this past weekend, so if there is any grammatical errors, please don't hold it against me. What I'm asking for right now is an ad hoc committee to be established. I noticed that there is an ordinance that was passed a time ago, and it says that the president had to pull out time and establish an ad hoc committee for said purposes. Currently, I'm working on, have been going out, and as you know, to Baltimore, DC, over the last eight months to look at the vacant abandoned property issue through the network. I'm a part of it, why he knows the young, like, officials in the network. And during the course of those visits, we've gone out, and lastly, we went out, I went to Maryland, Baltimore, and we hung out in Baltimore and looked at some of their new efforts in revitalizing the city with the vacant abandoned homes and some of their properties as well. But I only got briefed upon what Flint, Michigan was doing, Baltimore, Boston, Massachusetts, Minneapolis, Minnesota, and also Flint, Michigan are doing as well. There was this ordinance that was passed last year at St. Louis, Missouri, by one of our colleagues in the, in the network. And she was able to attach, you know, larger fees and fines and more teeth within their vacant abandoned properties ordinance, and have gotten some good gain out of it as well, because they're suffering greatly in that area. So, what I would like to do is look at our, our ordinance as it stands right now, see what code is at in enforcing it, meeting the proper numbers, but also establish to the committee to move forward to start addressing the issues that we have here locally. I know in everyone's district, we have vacant abandoned homes, homes and properties as well, and sort of setting a new standard on how we would enforce these things and how we would come up with new ideas to make sure it's either affeutified or sell them off, or making sure that people stay in their homes. One example of people staying in their homes was a, uh, Boston, Massachusetts, they found a nonprofit bank that's in Boston, Massachusetts, that are helping people stay in their homes right now. It was through the state legislature, as well as the local municipality that's gone through. And what they are doing is that they're buying the loan back from the bank that they're foreclosing, the bank that's foreclosing on the loan, and allowing the people to stay in their home at the same rate or reduced price. And so, following some of the things and examples that I've seen in other places, maybe we can start doing these things here in this locality. Reason why I asked for full autonomy and choosing the committees is because I have gone out to myself, part of the association, Triple N, Alana, and then some other organizations as well, and maybe we can share that, uh, excuse me, we share that responsibility. But I would really like to get this started as soon as possible so that we can get some heads or tails about our current issue. Judith Fox, and it was a number of other professors that did a study maybe two years ago about our current situation. But it was talked about more so past or before the economic meltdown. And it was a thick study. I don't know, it floated around the council, I have one of my guests right now. But anyhow, they talked about the pre-existing conditions that South Bend was going through before the economic crisis that we all came into, before us recession. And I would like to also engage those professors as well at the table about that and what we could do to start, I guess, remedy, or give a remedy to our current state. You know, maybe there is a marketing effort to start selling out properties to people who will stay here locally. Maybe not, you know, but I would like to start this conversation with the ad hoc committee. So, I'm asking for your favorable recommendation.
Okay. Well, first, I'll get with Kathy to see what all that constitutes of that hot committee, what it's established for, so on and so forth, to find out all the particulars that might be done. So, that, um, and see what the parameters of that is. I don't know if a committee like that, as I would say, I think would probably fall under probably a portion of CED as far as what they have been doing, and possibly also help in public safety for the update of the ordinance of what they've done.
Well, we know they haven't done anything, 'cause that's the question I've been asking for, you know, such a long time, about what are we doing with vacant housing, our vacant land?
Well, I know we take it down...
They don't even know, they don't even have a number, you know, and this has been code enforcement issue for, what, two or three years at this point? We don't know, and they don't know either, because they haven't been given a law of it. Kathy has sent, I think, code enforcement, times two or times three, a letter, ties twice, and asks code enforcement an update of the registry. They didn't even respond. So, you know, somebody, and this is why I'm moving forward with it, because it needs to be taken care of.
Does anybody else have any comments?
One component, you know, this may be too encompassing for the vacant house ordinance, but, 'cause it kind of, you know, for enforcement of dilapidated structures. But one thing in here we could have room for, thing is, maybe something better, information on the mortgages that are available to people that are still own their home, but are in trouble with their mortgage.
Right.
There was a good article in the paper recently about whacking some of these companies. Did you read that? I catch that in the Tribune a couple, like, last week, about, holy cow, how a lot of these big mortgage companies really scammed a lot of people and homeowners. And where this hits home to me is, like, three weeks ago, I was home during one of those winter nights, and there's a knock on my door, and it's a neighbor lady that used to live in our neighborhood years ago. Her husband died 20-some years ago, but she has a house, nice house, over in the first district. In fact, she was gonna come see you, Derek, but I said there was, her house was getting sold at a mortgage, a mortgage sale. Yeah, not a tax sale, but a...
Forclosure sale.
Forclosure sale here. And if there's anything I could do, well, there, not much I could do for the lady at that time. But then I actually realized how little I knew, or what resources do we have locally or out here to maybe help these people and, you know, and our quandary, where to go. And she was dealing with a mortgage company. Obviously, it had been sold off, and it was some company out of Texas, and this guy was rude and crude and spoke with an accent.
Sure.
And who knows who owned it. And, you know, that doesn't, you know, make right for her problems. She got in on it, but, boy, it made me wonder how many other people are in the same boat, struggling with their house, not knowing what's available from the feds or from the state or remedies to keep people in their homes.
Exactly.
That are trying to buy them and willing to make payments on them.
Well, there is an example like that in Monroe Park right now. Monroe Park Airport Association, the president has gone out and secured a new mortgage lender for that area to make sure that people actually stay in their homes at a reduced cost. So, they're actually going in as a nonprofit organization that does it as well. And they're going in and buying the loan as well and reducing the cost for the homeowners to stay in the home. So, we have the example to the law, please, just that no one really knows about it, because information's not being shared. And so, this ad hoc committee could play a part of facilitating as well.
But when, when the mayor listed the number of demolitions, is that only part of the issue? He had them in his state of the city, you know, he talked about how many they toward out.
Sure.
What I'm seeing here is, you want to go a lot deeper than that and find out more, more pertinent information about the status of the properties.
Sure. You know, I want to go and to see what, how many citations that code enforcement has done. I want to see how many properties that we actually are owning or that we own or holding on to. I want to look at the demolitions and where they're going at and what, what part is focused on versus the other parts. And I could say, you know, there's disparities between the two, but just to know what's going on. We want to look at the aggregate picture of how we are actually managing our vacant housing situation, because that's how we get our money to operate. And if we don't have money to operate, we're a dead city. So, not saying we are a dead city, I'm just saying that's exactly what happens. So, I think it is our job to start looking at these things.
Right. One thing I would question and make to see some research on, there's no Indiana city. Indiana sometimes has some adequate law.
Well, I'm open for anything.
That would suggest you need to do some research, have Kathy do that, you know, how would that apply to us? Because some other places, I'm all for taking the property. Indiana has some, sometimes some things that ties your hand, you know what I'm saying?
Well, the reason why those weren't listed, and I want to tell you, and really, Indianapolis is probably doing some great things, is because I'm only representing from Indiana that goes to these conferences. And so, if I don't have the information, nothing from Indiana is being given. So, I can only use the information I have, but I'm not against using any information from Indiana, because that makes it easier when you're talking about state codes. So, this is a conversation that I am willing to have with the ad hoc committee so we can go out and make sure we tackle some of these issues that we're facing. So, no, I'm open to almost any and everything.
Just want to be honest with you. If you can identify some Indiana municipalities that are doing similar things, it's a facility, is what I think you're asking.
Right.
I go to that conference with him, or am I too old?
No, man, we can go, man.
Is this young, young elected official?
Give me a chaperone.
And are we okay in Reverend Rouse's legacy square? I see something coming up on it tomorrow. Are we good on that, or has it been revised? Or do we know what the plan is like, or not? Or do I need to come do?
Yeah, we do.
Are you happy with it, or?
I'm not happy.
No?
But I, if I get the written commitments in my hands, I just emailed them. Uh, Tim Sexton, oh, no. Anyway, anyway, so if I don't have my hands, I'm not looking for it.
What is that?
Because he's gotta be under oversight.
Did you get that email? So, I was close, 74 percent.
Had a couple of chances to look at it during my career.
The Monday, February 14, 2011, South Bend Common Council is now in session. I'll rise for the invocation by Vice President Oliver.
Let us pray. The Lord, we thank you so much for being here tonight. We ask for your wisdom to give us understanding as we make decisions tonight. Bless our city, continue to help it to thrive, and bless each person who is in our audience tonight. Thank you for everyone who's come. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, where do you read the roll? Mr. Henry Davis.
He is here.
Mr. LaFountain.
Here.
Mrs. Pozzello.
Present.
Dr. Varner.
Present.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Present.
Mr. Curset.
Present.
Councilmember Rouse.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
President Dieter.
President, Mr. Vorty.
All nine present. Word from the Subcommittee on Minutes. To the common council of the city of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the January 24, 2011, meeting and the special meeting on February 7, 2011, and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Minutes of both meetings signed by Derek Dieter and David Varner.
Both, uh, both, I moved it, both minutes of both meetings are approved as read.
Second. We have a motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Anyone in opposition? Under special business, I'm proud to announce that Councilmember Timothy A. Rouse has been named to the Architectural Review Board of Ignition Park. Congratulations on that honor, Councilmember Rouse.
Thank you, it was a pleasure to meet you, Dieter.
Also, under special business, can I have a motion to hear 1108 under the resolution portion of the meeting? Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And our reports of city offices? See none. We have a motion resolved in the committee of the halls. Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Committee of the halls is in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where we hear the reports from the various committees, and we have second reading and public hearing. Mr. Vorty, would you please read Bill, Substitute Bill 8410?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, annexing to and bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana, certain land in center township contiguous therewith. Councilmanic District Number Five, Thomas W. and Jane M. Henry, 61175 Miami Road, South Bend, Indiana, 46614. Make a motion, here's a substitute version.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The zoning and annexation committee met this afternoon. Can we bring substitute version of Bill 8410 to the full council with a favorable report?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there a representative present? Would you please state your name and address?
Name's Thomas Henry. At 61175 Miami Road. And my wife, Jane, and I would respectfully like to be annexed into the city of South Bend. We've had some with the Miami Road widening. I think everybody understands there's a, the Miami Road widening. We live at the corner of Miami and Farmington Road. And with that road widening, they brought the sanitary line, the eight-inch sanitary line, down to my west property line, and we'd like to, to hook up to that, to that sanitary line, having some septic issues.
Thank you. Uh, any, any council member have a question of the presenter? Seeing none, hearing none. Anyone present? I do have a slight question, and Mr. Gilat, you may have to address this. When you were present earlier, you made mention of the fact, sir, that, Mr. Henry, that the, you went to sewer, but the water line, you won't have city water line?
My plans are, maybe in the future, I could have the water line. At this point, I have a well that's only two years old, and sanitary line at this point is what my request is.
Sure. I guess my question is, how, how does the city then charge for the sewage?
Gary Gilat, Public Works Director, offices on the 13th floor. In the case of a residential customer who doesn't have a water service, we do a flat-rate sewer. The assumption made is that someone who doesn't have a meter will use more water than someone who does. So, the, it's, it's set at, I want to say 800 or 900 cubic feet per month, a little higher than typical metered usage. That's how it's done, it's in the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you, sir. All right. Any, any council, anyone present wishing to speak in favor of this bill? Substitute Bill 8410. Anyone present from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone present wishing to speak against it? See none, hearing none. Is there a motion from the council?
Make a motion for favorable recommendation. Have a third reading on the 28th, second for this month.
You've heard the motion and the second for the third reading on 228. All in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, the ayes have it, the motion carries.
Can we make a motion to continue 7510 to 22811?
Some move. You've heard the motion in the second to continue 7510 to 228. All in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Mr. Vorty, would you please read Bill 0211?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 21, zoning Article 12, floodplain regulations in order to make corrections in ordinance number 10037-10.
There a committee report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The bill numbered, that's 0211, was heard this afternoon by the zoning and annexation committee, and it comes to the full council with a favorable report.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there a representative present?
Krista Nader with the Area Plan Commission, offices on the 11th floor. You may remember, back in October, we came to you with a new floodplain maps that had been prepared by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, that were set to be effective January 6, 2011. The ordinance was passed at the October 1, 2010, common council meeting. After we sent that petition down to the state, the state, Indiana Department of Natural Resources, requested that we make additional changes. Most of those are simply typos, additions, deletions. And there was one definition that was changed sufficiently. Also, the effective date was changed to January 6. It does not, this doesn't change the maps or anything like that. It's truly just a text change. So, are there any questions?
Thank you. Any council member have a question of the presenter? Seeing none, hearing none. Is there anyone present in the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 0211? Anyone present wishing to speak in favor of Bill 0211? Seeing none. Is there anyone present wishing to speak against of Bill 0211? Anyone present wishing to speak against the bill? Seeing none, hearing none. Councilmembers, there a motion, please?
Move for favorable recommendation.
Second.
Motion is made and properly second. The Senate, the third reading was favorably. All in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, the ayes have it, the motion carries.
Make a motion for 8610 to be continued to 31411.
Second.
Motion is made and properly second to continue 8610 to 314. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Motion to rise from the committee of the...
Some move.
Second.
Well, council is now in session. Mr. Vorty, third on 211. Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 21, zoning Article 12, floodplain regulations in order to make corrections in ordinance number 10037-10.
Uh, move Bill 211 be passed.
Second.
Motion and a second, Mr. Vorty. Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Pozzello.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Curset.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye. Proceed to resolutions, 1108.
1108?
1109? No, 1108. 1108. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, adopting a written fiscal plan and establishing a policy for the provision of services to an annexation area in center township, Henry Annexation Area. Thank you. Committee report.
Mr. President, the zoning and annexation committee met this afternoon, and we bring Bill Number 1108 to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. Michael DeVito with Department of Community and Economic Development, with offices on the 12th floor of this building. We covered this resolution in detail at the committee meeting, so I'll summarize for those attending here. The fiscal plan addresses a 1.21 acre voluntary annexation area addresses a one-point-two-one acre voluntary annexation area at the southwest corner of Miami Street and Farmington Lane. It meets the state law contingency requirement. The property would continue to be used for a single-family home. No capital improvements are planned as part of this annexation. Connection to sewer and water, both available at the annexation area, are made at the petitioner's expense. Miami Street is already maintained by the city, and the city and the county will agree on a maintenance plan for the approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-four feet of Farmington Lane to be added to the city. Five residents live in the annexation area, which will be in the common council's fifth district. The annexation area will be served by Police Beat sixteen, Fire Station ten, Emergency Medic one, and Code Enforcement Area five. These and other non-capital services will be in place within one year of the effective date of the annexation, with response times comparable to other areas of the city. That concludes my presentation, but I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody like to speak in favor of this? Anyone like to speak in favor? Eleven-oh-eight? In opposition? Counsel.
Move for adoption of eleven-oh-eight.
Second.
Mr. Vorty. Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Puzello.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Cursitt.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Nine aye.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as thirty-eight forty-nine Shower Lux Drive, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for South Bend Gear LLC.
Thank you. Committee report?
Mr. President, the committee, Economic Community Development, met this afternoon on eleven-oh-nine and sends it to the full council with enthusiasm favorably.
Thank you very much, sir. President, we need to name an address for the record and a short synopsis of your project.
Members of the common council, my name is Stan Blankey. I'm a manager of South Bend Gear. South Bend Gear resides at forty-seven oh-one Nims Parkway, South Bend, Indiana. South Bend Gear is a new startup company. It is a joint venture company owned by Schaefer Gearworks, Inc., and also a family-owned gear business in Italy by the name of Samaschini, S.P.A. The project consists of purchasing new CNC equipment, several pieces of equipment, as well as supporting equipment. The project cost is estimated to be fifteen million, six-hundred-thousand dollars over a two-year period. The first year, the employment will be twelve individuals, new hires. And by December thirty-first of two thousand and twelve, the plan is to hire, will have a total of twenty-six new hires. So we are looking forward to your approval for the equipment. And just for your information, today, ground was broken on the campus of Schaefer Gear for a new fifty thousand square foot building to support this venture. So we appreciate a favorable recommendation.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone like to speak in favor of eleven-oh-nine? Anyone in opposition? Counsel.
Move for passing. Eleven-oh-nine?
Second.
Mr. Vorty.
Mrs. Puzello.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Cursitt.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Eleven-ten, Mr. Vorty.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as eight-fifteen Oliver Plow Court, an economic revitalization area for purposes of up to an eight-year real property tax abatement for South Bend Redevelopment Commission slash Oliver Plow Partners Limited Partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Vorty. Mr. Rouse.
Mr. Dieter, the Community Economic Development Committee met on this bill also and sends it to council favorably.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Paul Farron. I work for Holiday Properties, located at two-two-seven South Main Street here in South Bend. I believe that everybody was at the committee meeting this afternoon, so I'll give a brief recap of the project. Again, this is a build-to-suit industrial facility that's going to be located in the Oliver Plow Industrial Park on Chapin Street and Oliver Plow Court. The facility will be approximately forty thousand square feet, and it'll be the new home of ABC Supply Company. ABC Supply is a distributor of roofing materials and exterior construction products and is very good at what they do. Be located on approximately four-point-four acres within the park, and it really accomplishes several great revitalization goals established by the Economic Development Department. This will be a reuse of a brownfield location and, you know, revitalize a piece of ground that's been vacant for a number of years. ABC Supply will match the uses that are already found in the park. The two, two current uses are construction suppliers themselves. And again, this facility will be an attractive quality building that matches the character of surrounding uses. Along with myself, Don Jeziorzki from ABC Supply Company is here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
I have one. Going to put a fire sprinkler in that building?
Ah, yes, there will be a fire sprinkler.
Okay.
Anyone like to speak in favor of eleven-ten? Anyone in opposition? Counsel may have a recommendation.
Move for passage of eleven-ten.
Mr. Vorty.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Cursitt.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Puzello.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye. Eleven-eleven, Mr. Vorty.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, reconfirming a economic revitalization area deduction for McCormick and Company Incorporated.
Thank you, Councilmember Rouse. I believe the pros and cons are spoken on this. What was the result?
The pros and cons, out of the Community Economic Development Committee sends it to the full council favorably.
Thank you very much. Name and address for the record, sir.
Michael Calhoun, three-four-two-five West Lathrop Drive, South Bend, Indiana. Good evening, members of the common council. McCormick and Company is recommending an increase in the amount of the company's five-year personal property tax abatement granted by this council through resolution number four-zero-seven-six-dash-eleven on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven. Original amount requested as amended was one million three-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. McCormick is currently evaluating moving existing brand of products from a co-packer to a company-owned facility. The estimated cost in, in equipment to set up this new production operation is six million seven-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. McCormick is considering their South Bend facility for this relocation site. As a result, McCormick is asking the amount of their investment in their personal property and abatement be increased by six million seven-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars to a new total of eight million one-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. The abatement's economic revitalization area designation has an expiration date of July twenty-five, two thousand and twelve, which allows time for this business relocation to be carried out. With this increase, the total taxes abated and paid will increase from ten thousand seventy-three dollars and one-hundred-and-three-thousand-eighty-four dollars respectively to one-hundred-and-twenty, one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-five dollars and five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seven dollars. It also, it should also be noted that McCormick had planned to increase employment by five physician, five positions under its abatement as currently approved. However, McCormick has already increased total employment by ten positions to a new total of full-time one-hundred-and-thirty-three jobs, and total wages have resultingly increased from six million two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars to six million seven-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-three-three dollars for an increase of four-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars against the projected increase of one-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. With this proposed move, the company would add an additional incremental fourteen positions and increase wages incrementally by four-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-one dollars. This request requires a reconfirming resolution from the city, from the South Bend Common Council. On behalf of McCormick and Company and the one-hundred-and-thirty-three current full-time team members, we respectfully request support of this, from this council and the community. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Calhoun, we want to impress upon, upon McCormick, as you have with us, that we are pleased to be able to do this, but also want to extend to you on behalf of this council, as Ms. White alluded to this afternoon, anything else we can do to make sure we retain those jobs and add new ones. We certainly would be honored to give the opportunity to participate in that process.
Well, we appreciate that. And the relationship between the council and McCormick has been, been very strong. We appreciate everything that the council's done so far, and I'll certainly bring that request back to the decision-makers at McCormick in, in Maryland.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Anyone like to speak in favor of eleven-eleven? Anyone in opposition? Counsel.
Move for passage, eleven-oh.
Second.
Mr. Vorty, will you read that, please? Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Cursitt.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Puzello.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye. Thank you. Eleven-twelve, please, Mr. Vorty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving the issuance of a scrap metal slash junk dealer slash recycling operation license for the calendar year two thousand and eleven pursuant to section four-dash-fifty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code.
Does that conclude your report, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Anyone like to speak in favor of eleven-twelve? Counsel, does anyone have any questions or comments on Mr. Vorty's presentation?
Just move for the passage of Bill eleven-twelve.
Second. Mr. Vorty, will you read that, please? Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Cursitt.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Puzello.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye. Thank you. Eleven-twelve, please, Mr. Vorty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving the issuance of a scrap metal slash junk dealer slash recycling operation license for the calendar year two thousand and eleven pursuant to section four-dash-fifty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code.
Does that conclude your report, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Anyone like to speak in favor of eleven-twelve? And, or opposition? Counsel, does anyone have any questions or comments on Mr. Vorty's presentation?
Just move for the passage of Bill eleven-twelve.
Second.
Mr. Vorty.
Mr. Cursitt.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Puzello.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye. Thank you. Do you not have any first readings? Any unfinished business before this council? No? Any new business before this council?
President Dieter, may I? But you said, you sure?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Jerry Nizgowski is here right now, and, you know, this was my fault. I had asked him and the committee from LaSalle Square Planning Committee to show up and give a presentation. And there was a conversation President Dieter and I had, and, you know, the ball was dropped anyhow. I'm asking council that we have a presentation from LaSalle Square Planning Committee here next council meeting, not during a subcommittee meeting, but to play part, whether it's special business or during the special business portion of the council. And I was wondering if we can get that scheduled so that they can come in and tell us how far we're moving ahead. I've also gotten information today from Code Enforcement that there isn't going to be a, well, excuse me, there was a demolition citation order or order, demolition order, so, excuse me, demolition order placed on a sign at LaSalle Square today. And so, there will be going off to bid sometime during April, so we'll start seeing that come down because that's out of code and has been out of code for quite some time. So, there are some things that are being done. But the planning committee has done a great job of keeping things going and the conversation up in, in the community. So, I would like to see them present during special business the next council meeting. And also, I remember back about a month ago, we talked about having city department heads show up here at council meeting, and I was wondering how close were we to making sure that that was a reality versus a conversation.
So, I think the parameters of those would be unfinished, but we'll take them on the news. So, your question is for, first for, you want for LaSalle?
Yes.
Okay.
Make sure that it's under special business for next council meeting, which is the twenty-eighth of February.
Okay. We can get with.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In opposition? And your second question was regarding?
The city department heads showing to council meetings in case we do have a question about something that's going on within the council meeting, or whether there just needs to be something that's talked, needs to be talked about, like what we're doing right now. That was a conversation that we all shared maybe a month ago, and I've been asking for that probably for the last two years, when we have a report from city offices, because that lays dormant on our agenda. And so, when we don't know what things are going on, or we're not in constant contact or communication, or we don't even may or not have a relationship that we need to have with the city department, maybe we need to make sure that we keep some sort of tabs on what's going on within the functions of the city department, so that we are aware when it's time for budgeting, and so those things are taken care of properly.
Okay. I will sign that to Tom LaFountain under his committee, and he can have a meeting to discuss that, to find out how we want to proceed with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to give just a brief overview of the health and public safety. We held our organizational meeting on February the eleventh, two thousand and eleven, to establish our priorities for this upcoming two thousand and eleven year. Council members present included Councilmember Rouse, Puzello, the Dieter, Henry Davis, Jr., and our attorney, Kathleen Zankansky Farron. We started our meeting out with reviewing our end report in terms of those agenda items that we had established for two thousand and ten, and those items that we did not address as well. We had open discussion, and then the council members indicated or agreed to focus on the following topics for this year, the city taxi cab ordinance. Administration had approached the council and the Health and Public Safety Committee to, to begin to review our current taxi cab ordinance. We held two meetings where draft ordinance was prepared by the legal department. Concerns over taxi cab market and regulations were discussed. Concerns were also voiced that the draft ordinance has never been updated to incorporate suggestions offered to the city administration. The draft ordinance post, is posted on the city website, is dated October two thousand and nine. From that open discussion, the following recommendation was made. The city administration will be asked to prepare a bullet point summary of all the suggested changes to the current taxi cab ordinance, along with setting forth reasons for each proposal. The city administration will be asked to update the Health and Public Safety Committee on this topic at a thirty-minute meeting to be called for Monday, February the twenty-eighth. There will, this will not be opened for discussion, it's just a proposal for the committee and other council members to hear about the recommendations, as well as the proposed changes. A next item that we will be discussing is the Quality of Life Ordinance. Chart had been prepared by our council attorney in the past, which summarizes the data of several Quality of Life Ordinance. All the recommendation that came out of the committee meeting was that the council attorney would be asked to work with the ordinance violation clerk and update the chart on the Quality of Life Ordinance upon review of the same by the committee. The committee would make recommendations for ordinance which should be amended. It was very clear that enforcement of our Quality of Life Ordinance continues to be a challenge. The graffiti issue, Councilmember White, which is myself, noted that Councilmember White The city administration will be asked to prepare a bullet point summary of all the suggested changes to the current taxicab ordinance, along with setting forth reasons for each proposal. The city administration will be asked to update the Health and Public Safety Committee on this topic at a thirty-minute meeting to be called for Monday, February the twenty-eighth. There will, this will not be open for discussion, it's just a proposal for the committee and other council members to hear about the recommendations as well as the proposed changes. A next item that we will be discussing is the quality of life ordinance. Chart had been prepared by our council attorney in the past, which summarizes the data of several quality of life ordinance. All the recommendation that came out of the committee meeting was that the council attorney would be asked to work with the ordinance violation clerk and update the chart on the quality of life ordinance upon review of the same by the committee. The committee would make recommendations for ordinance which should be amended. It was very clear that enforcement of our quality of life ordinance continues to be a challenge. The graffiti issue, council member White, which is myself, noted that council member Oliver Davis has been working on this issue. Based on comments by council member Henry Davis, council member White, council member Rouse, and council member Dieter, it was apparent that a much more comprehensive approach to addressing graffiti is needed. It was also noted that the police department no longer has a gang unit, and that much of the graffiti appears to be gang-related. And so, again, we'll be working with administration, but we also made a recommendation that we will invite the city administration to outline how the city plans to clean up graffiti, which must be done on a timely basis. And again, we're looking at developing a comprehensive approach towards dealing with graffiti within our community. Another item that we will be, or issue that we will be addressing, council member Henry Davis brought to the council, we had through the Health and Public Safety Committee, and I believe we had one or two meetings in terms of the illegal dumping, that is a city-wide issue, and council member Henry Davis suggested that hot problem areas should be addressed. So, the recommendation that came forth was that the Department of Code Enforcement would be invited to a meeting of the Health and Public Safety Committee to hear what their vision, their plan, and accountability of enforcing and addressing illegal dumping. Data from the two thousand year on this topic should be summarized by the code, which addresses, among other things, manpower, cost to the city, and cost paid by the violators. We also continue to talk about updating the quality of life ordinance, but also establishing a mechanism by which we can regularly receive updates on the various ordinance that we have currently on the books, a tracking mechanism. Clearly, from a council perspective, from a committee perspective, we need to develop a mechanism by which we can track when we request information, by whom, and when action is expected. So, the city clerk will be asked to develop a tracking mechanism on all information requested by the council and/or individual council members by date of request, summary of request, which gets to council member Davis concerned about establishing procedures from a council perspective, so that we can respond to our constituents on a timely basis. Some of the additional topics, cost recovery fee ordinance for the South Bend Police Department, licensing of the mini marks as requested by council member Henry Davis, and a number of other issues were discussed. Our Health and Public Safety Committee will be very busy this year. I appreciate all the members for coming to the organizational meeting, and we will also invite the citizens, if you have issues or concerns that you would wish to see addressed through the Health and Public Safety Committee, that you will email those to the city clerk. And again, public safety remains a top priority, and I really thank the committee members for meeting with me and for establishing our agenda for this upcoming year. This is something that we've done each year as a committee, and if any of the citizens would like to have a copy of the meeting, I'm quite sure they will be posted on the website. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Privilege of the floor, anyone who wants to speak to this council at this time about something that was not on the agenda tonight? You have up to three minutes. It's not a dialogue, you get to say what you want, and then it will be assigned to a council member to follow up. So, if you'd like to speak, step up to the microphone. Right now. See none? We are done.
Hey, Kathy.